Good evening. This special meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the councils, due to us being in a virtual meeting, please note that I will call your name first. I can recognize you. Once you've been recognized, please state your name and begin talking. Instead of a invocation tonight, we will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presented by the National League of Baltimore. Mr. Jackson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Hello, everyone. Great to see you virtually. As we have already said, my name is Charles Jackson. I'm from Family League of Baltimore, and I'm here to let you know about the Free Summer Meals Program for youth 18 and under and to ask for your help in spreading the word. In past years, we've had up to 300 open walk-in sites in Baltimore City, and we want this year to be as successful even though we're operating under our new norms. Asking two things. Please let families and youth know that these free meals are available at locations around the city. We have information and images for you to share on your social media and in your newsletter. Families can grab and go meals at locations, and they can find the locations at MDSummerMeals.org, calling 211, or texting FOOD or COMITA to 877-877. Two, please let constituents know free meals can be served where anywhere where children congregate during the summer. And due to COVID, we are operating a little differently. If you know of any organization that wants to serve grab and go meals, if they can do it and it's free of charge, and we're looking for any type of community site or a nonprofit or faith-based site, for anyone interested, they can please email us for more information at food@familyleague.org. Again, that's food@familyleague.org. Council members, we generally have flyers and sunglasses for you and swag, but because we're meeting virtually, we don't have that for you. But hopefully next year, we will be able to see you in person and be able to provide you those sunglasses that you all love and can take those pictures with. But we will be providing you with the information electronically for you to provide to your constituents. Thank you again for having me, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Roll call. The clerk will now call the roll.
President Scott.
Right.
Councilman Cohen.
President.
Councilwoman Fray.
President.
Councilman Dorsey.
President.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Councilman Snyder.
President.
Council Vice President Middleton.
President.
Pinkett.
President.
Councilman Burnett.
Here.
Councilman Horowitz.
President.
Councilman Reisinger.
President.
Councilman Costello.
President.
Councilman Stokes.
President.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. Thank you. Council members, administrative duties associated with COVID-19 have brought about the necessity of changing the council's schedule to more regularly meetings in the month of July. Update and updated schedule was provided to you today by the Executive Secretary, and without objection, we will suspend Rules 2-2B1 in order to hold council meetings every Monday of the remainder of July. All right, seeing that there is no objection, Rule 2-2B1 is suspended. We will now proceed with the adoption of the Journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the June 22, 2020 proceedings have been forwarded to the council members' inboxes.
Thank you. Without objection, the Journal will be adopted. The Journal was adopted. A bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages 2 through 10 of your agenda. A bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 20-0550 Charter Amendment, City Council Modernization and Restructuring Act. For the purpose of reducing the size of the city council, requiring that the city council president be elected by the city council from among its member -- wait a minute. Let me change that one. For the purpose of reducing the size of the city council, requiring that the city council vice president be elected by the voters of Baltimore City, specifying that in case of a vacancy in the position of city council president, the vice president shall become president, conforming and clarifying related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0551 Charter Amendment, Term Limits. For the purpose of providing that a person who has served a certain number of terms as mayor, comptroller, president of the city council, or mayor of the city council -- excuse me, or member of the city council is ineligible to again serve in that office during the immediately following term, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor, administration -- the President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0552 Tax Credits, Historical Properties. For the purpose of extending the period within which applications may be accepted for a historical improvement tax credit, granting the Director of Planning certain administrative powers and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration, and the lot.
This has been assigned to the -- this has been assigned -- sorry, this has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0553 Urban Renewal, Washington Village Amendment. For the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Washington Village to revise and exhibit to the renewal plan to reflect the addition of a new disposition --
Lot.
-- and to clarify and correct certain references in the plan, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0554 Brown Fields Incentive Program, Termination of Program Participation. For the purpose of winding down the city of Baltimore's participation in the Brown Fields Incentive Program, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0555 High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Tax Credit Revision. For the purpose of making certain revisions to a provision regarding the use of the High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Tax Credit in conjunction with other tax subsidies, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0556 Resoning, 2087 Drurt Park Drive. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 2087 Drurt Park Drive as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the I-1 zoning district to the IMU-1 zoning district. Sponsor, Pinkett.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
This is just a simple rezoning from I-1 to IMU for the purpose of creating commercial space as well as five residential units associated with it. Thank you, sir.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0557 Baltimore City Administrative Procedure Act Regulations. For the purpose of establishing a uniform procedure for the notice, publication, and adoption of regulations in Baltimore City government, establishing the Code of Baltimore Regulations Annotated (COPRA) and providing for its content, defining certain terms, requiring that a proposed regulation cite the statutory authority under which it's being proposed and embrace only a single subject, requiring that proposed regulations be approved for form and legal sufficiency by the city solicitor prior to its publication, requiring that agencies publish notice of the proposed regulation and allow for public comments to be submitted over a certain period of time, setting forth the modes of publication of a proposed regulation, establishing the contents of the notice of proposed regulations, allowing for any council member to refer to a proposed regulation for review by the Committee of Legislative Investigations, and providing for the procedures for that review, requiring that after the notice and comment period, an agency resubmit the proposed regulation to the city solicitor for a determination of whether any material changes have been made to the regulation, requiring that proposed regulation be republished if a material change has been made, providing for a certain period for which a proposed regulation must be adopted by a regulation before the proposed regulation is deemed withdrawn, providing for temporary regulations during a certain emergency, requiring that adopted regulations be submitted to the Director of Legislative Reference prior to the regulation taking effect, permitting the Director of Legislative Reference to make certain nonsubstantive changes to a regulation, allowing agencies to remove certain obsolete regulations, providing for the severability of certain regulations, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the establishment and orderly and transparent administrative procedure for the adoption of regulations in Baltimore City. Sponsor, Sneed, Dorsey, Vice President Middleton, Clark.
Thank you. Do we have any further co-sponsors? I can't see you, so if you do, please take yourself off mute and let us know.
Councilman Henry.
Councilman Henry, if there's a sponsor, anybody else.
Thank you, Council President. This is a mere great bill when you talk about rules and regulations and having a process for everything. Right now, we do not, as Baltimore City, have a uniform process. And so what we're doing is creating and adopting and doing it in a transparent fashion, and that's what we really want to do. When you go to any city agency right now, a number of people can give you any different ways of doing something, but that is not the correct way. And I think how we should move forward, making sure that we just have one policy, one rule or regulation where everyone can go, where everything can be drafted from that, and everyone can see it. Right now, if you look at other places like even the federal government, the state of Maryland, Inarondo County, Baltimore County, they all have something, but we do not. And so when you just look at moving forward and bringing this all into one form, I think this is the perfect way to do it. I'm going to also lean into my co-sponsor, Ryan Dorsey, who worked on this with us.
Councilman Dorsey would like to comment on --
Can you unmute yourselves? Yes, thank you, Mr. Council President. Thank you, Councilwoman Sneed. This is a bill that's been on my mind for the last couple of years, and I'm glad to be able to get to work on this with Councilwoman Sneed. I'll also note that the work of drafting this began even much longer ago, I believe in 2009, when Councilman Henry first asked for this bill to be drafted. This is something that is essential and basic to the operation of our government, or should be. At every -- as Councilwoman Sneed mentioned, at every other level of government and in every other jurisdiction in Maryland, an Administrative Procedure Act exists, and it exists in order to ensure that the promulgation of rules and regulations is happening to matter, and one that allows for an opportunity to critique and to give feedback. And I'm really looking forward to Baltimore City having just this basic level of regular operations normalized and standardized across all city agencies. So thank you for letting me share my support for this and looking forward to the hearings on this. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee. Mr. Young, are you there? Hold on one second, you guys. I think we may have lost Mr. Young. Caitlin, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Sorry, computer is moving slow. City Council Bill 20-0558 City Officers and Employees Commuting Benefits. For the purpose of requiring that the Department of Human Resources have a written policy regarding certain parking benefits, requiring the Department of Human Resources offer a public mass transit subsidy to every officer and employee -- Sorry, uh, to every -- Dominic is calling you, sorry. Requiring the Department of Human Resources --
The Department of Human Resources.
-- alternative to any city officer or employee entitled or eligible to receive a parking benefit, defining certain terms, and generally relating to encouraging the use of public mass transit by city officers and employees. Sponsor, Dorsey Sneed.
Any further co-sponsors to this legislation? All right, Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm out of trouble here. This bill addresses what I consider to be a pretty basic inequity that we house in our city government, and one that is not only inequitable among city employees, but is actually harmful to the public in a practical way every single day. Right now, we are spending -- we're budgeting about $700,000 each year to provide free parking to about 5% of the city's employees. We provide no transportation benefit to the other 95%. That transportation benefit ensures that the people who are entitled to it or receive it will continue driving their single occupant vehicle into downtown every day, creating more pollution in our air, when we know that pollution is -- that cars are the number one emitter of toxic air pollutants in Baltimore City, which contributes to asthma, which is the number one reason why children are missing time from school in Baltimore City, and creating congestion in downtown of all places where for years we have heard people asking the question, what are we going to do about congestion? We are literally paying our own employees to become and to be that congestion every single day. And we don't even have a written policy about who gets that benefit, nowhere in writing. Is there any eligibility criteria for who gets this parking-driving benefit? This bill does three things. It says that there needs to be a written policy on criteria for eligibility for this fringe benefit that right now we're just doling out, as we feel, to high-paid and highly empowered people. The second thing it does is it says, for those who are receiving or entitled to receive this parking benefit, we need to offer them an alternative option, that if we're willing to invest in their transportation to and from work, we shouldn't limit our willingness to invest solely to driving single occupant vehicles, that there are policies called cash-out policies that say that if an employer is providing a parking benefit, they must offer the employee an alternative in a cash value to allow them to choose to support an alternative mode of transportation. And third, what this bill does is it says, it's really unacceptable for us to provide transportation benefits to only 5% of the city's employees, and particularly the ones who are the highest paid and most politically empowered, that if we're going to provide transportation benefits, like for parking, to anybody, then we need to provide bus passes to everybody. That's what this bill does. It says that we should be supporting sustainable modes of transportation and in an equitable fashion in order to move us away from continued dependency on automobiles and to make it more affordable for the people who work in this city to get to work in this city. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
This has been assigned to the Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0559 Commercial Parking Facilities Annual Licensing Fee. For the purpose of modifying the annual licensing fee for commercial parking facilities within the city of Baltimore, providing for the annual adjustment of the licensing fee for inflation as measured by the Consumer Price Index and conforming related provisions. Sponsors, Dorsey Sneed.
Thank you. Any further co-sponsors to this bill? Please speak now. All right, Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey again.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill, in a way, is just a matter of ensuring that we are fiscally responsible. During the budget hearings a few weeks ago, one of the questions that I asked the Finance Director is, is there any reason at all, once we've set a rate for a fee for city services or licensing or anything else, is there any reason why, once we set a fee, that fee shouldn't be increased regularly in order for it to hold its value over time, to simply keep up with the cost of inflation? If we decide that a city needs to collect a certain fee at a certain point in order to administer and issue licenses, if the cost of doing business goes up, then so should the fee the next year. The commercial parking facility's license fee was first set in 1941 at a rate that's basically 83 cents per 100 square feet. The law that sets that fee has been amended more than a dozen times since 1941. But on very few of those occasions have the sponsors of those bills, have the councils who passed those bills, said, hey, while we're at it, we should also increase the fee. This is a basic problem of politicizing a basic fiscal responsibility decision, embedding a fee in a law instead of passing it on to be simply indexed over time. If we had indexed this fee to inflation from the 1970 rate, today, the rate would be about $24 per 100 square feet of commercial parking facilities. But instead of $24, today, that rate is only $5.10. We're leaving millions of dollars on the table each year, and we're doing that in the interest of artificially keeping the cost of driving and parking low at the expense of Baltimore City taxpayers and public transit riders. This bill simply seeks for the city to be fiscally responsible and to make the use of cars and the profiting off of people using cars fair in comparison to other modes of transportation that are more sustainable. This is the second in a package of three bills that all address matters related to parking as we think about what we should be doing as a city to advance the idea of divestment from fossil fuel consumption and fossil fuel infrastructure. And I'll speak about the third bill in a moment. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0560 Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to Four-Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District, Variances 2437 Madison Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four-dwelling units in the R7 Zoning District on the property known as 2437 Madison Avenue as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, and granting variances for certain bulk regulations and gross floor area per unit type requirements. Sponsor, Pinkett.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett. All right, thank you, councilmen. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0561 Zoning, Zoning Code, Fossil Fuel Infrastructure. For the purpose of amending the zoning code to reduce and diminish reliance on fossil fuels by prohibiting the construction, creation, establishment, addition, and use of any off-street parking space or facility in open space zoning districts, prohibiting the construction, creation, or establishment of any new gas stations in any zoning district, and repealing requirements for providing a minimum number of off-street parking spaces per use type, substituting a maximum number of off-street parking spaces per use type, and correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions and tables. Sponsor, Dorsey Sneed.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. This is the third bill in this set of three bills that, again, really look at fossil fuel infrastructure as something that we can address at the local level. If we are thinking -- if when we think of fossil fuel policy, all we think of are pipelines and mountaintop coal removal and fracking and bomb trains, we're really missing a big part of what we can do as local government, what policy change we can make at the local level to help us in the fight to divest from fossil fuel dependence. And one of the things that at the core we can do at the local level is to stop promoting, permitting, and requiring that fossil fuel infrastructure be built as a routine matter just in order to do other things in our city government, and to stop building or allowing things to be built that we know are environmentally harmful and harmful to the communities in which they exist. Two of the simplest things that we can -- Two of the simplest things that we can do is stop building more gas stations and stop allowing that parks can be turned into parking lots. There's literally a song about this that says, pave paradise, put up a parking lot. Take all the trees and put them in a tree museum. Literally what this bill does is address that problem of the continued expansion of infrastructure that exists only to accommodate our socially engineered state of reliance on automobiles. But one of the big things that this bill does that's part of a national trend is to strike from our zoning code the minimum requirements that we build parking just in order to open up other uses. Right now, if we want to build, if a developer wants to build 10 housing units here in Baltimore City where 3,000 people are homeless every night, in order to build 10 housing units, you also have to construct 10 off-street parking spaces. And those generally come at a cost of about $30,000 per parking space. That means that in order to build 10 housing units, you've got to add $300,000 to your cost of construction. That not only makes it harder to finance the project and less likely that housing will get built, but it ensures that if the housing does get built, that that cost for that parking will get rolled into the rent whether or not the tenant ever owns a car. When we think about the cost of parking associated with other things, let's remember that the zoning code and what this bill addresses is a demand that if you want to open a cafe, you've got to also build off-street parking. If you want to open a veterinarian clinic, you also have to establish off-street parking. That in order just to grow our local economy by adding small businesses that help our neighborhoods to thrive, in some cases, you might have to tear down other buildings just in order to put a parking lot close enough to your business, and this is not good for our neighborhood. This is not good for the prospect of job growth and the resiliency of our city. What this bill does is says, instead of requiring that these parking lots, these parking spaces be built just in order to open these other uses, that instead, we should say, you're not allowed to build more than a certain amount of parking, turning our minimums into maximums to ensure that we are moving farther and farther away from forcing through our city laws the creation of fossil fuel infrastructure. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. I thank you, Councilman Dorsey. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee. A resolution is to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 20-0233-R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD7 License to a Class A7 License, 1300 to 1302 Lawrence Street. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code Annotated Alcohol and Beverage Section 12-902.1D1 to allow the license holder holding a Class BD7 Beer, Wine, and Liquor License issued for use at 1300 to 1302 Lawrence Street, Baltimore, Maryland, 21217, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class BD7 Beer, Wine, and Liquor License for a Class A7 Beer, Wine, and Liquor License. Sponsor, Pinkett.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe it was in 2018, the General Assembly created an A7 license which allowed for 87 license holders to transfer that license in exchange for the A7, which would mean that they would have to reduce their hours, but, and then also not have the requirement of having the bar connected to their liquor establishment. This resolution, and I'll speak to both of them, allow, is a part of the application process for the liquor board and for them to be able to apply for an A7 license. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 20-0234-R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD7 License to a Class A7 License, 1741 West North Avenue. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code Annotated Alcohol and Beverage Section 12-902.1D1 to allow the license holder holding a valid Class BD7 Beer, Wine, and Liquor License issued for use at 1741 West North Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, 21217, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class BD7 Beer, Wine, Liquor License for a Class A7 Beer, Wine, and Liquor License. Sponsor, Pinkett.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 20-0235-R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD7 License to a Class A7 License, 1041 Greenmount Avenue. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code Annotated Alcohol and Beverage Section 12-902.1D1 to allow the license holder holding a valid Class BD7 Beer, Wine, and Liquor License issued for 1041 Greenmount Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, 21202, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class BD7 Beer, Wine, and Liquor License for a Class A7 Beer, Wine, and Liquor License. Sponsor, Stokes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our colleague just talked about transferring a BD7 license to an A7, and what that does is those bars that have taverns with this A license, they're not, that tavern is not, they won't be able to use the tavern now with the A7 license, but the difference is they open up at 9:00 a.m. and close at 10:00 p.m. Also, it has the support of the Beville Metro Community Association. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 20-0236-R, Drop Dress Code. For the purpose of calling on Atlas Restaurant Group as a community partner with a large footprint along the Baltimore waterfront to set an example and be a leader in racial sensitivity and social justice by eliminating its dress code entirely as non-inclusive, divisive, and out of step with the values of the city and calling on Atlas to adopt corrective policies that will assist in the long term to dismantle the discriminatory culture that led to an African-American child and his mother being denied food service. Sponsors, Clark, Bullock, Middleton, McCray.
Thank you. Any further co-sponsors on this resolution?
Councilman Haverford.
Dorsey.
Councilman Schinger.
Cohen.
Sneed.
Burnett.
Thank you, and Council President as well. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Sneed. I'm having trouble letting this microphone. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Basically, the name of this resolution and the aim of it is to ask your support for calling on the Atlas Group to drop the dress code entirely throughout its organization and serve as leaders for other hospitality establishments throughout the city to eliminate their own dress codes and to trust that people are not going to abuse these locations, but have pride in themselves and to do away with the dress code mainly because it leaves an establishment and its workers too open for interpretation and implied or intended or not for discrimination. I put this resolution in because of that young man standing with his mother so quietly and loyally, knowing what it's like for a young man to be so embarrassed and yet to be so strong, and knowing that he will look back and always remember that moment, and I would like him to remember that something good came of it for other people who followed behind him. I have, my real interest after seeing the television coverage and news was receiving a, I think we all did, petition from musicians who are contracted and work at this location who really wanted to be involved themselves in, not only in this effort that the resolution speaks to, but in other efforts to work with the Atlas Group to help small black businesses in the city of Baltimore and to show their leadership in that manner as well as to provide an opportunity for employees to, some kind of opportunity for them to be able to report racism that they see occurring so that whoever they report that to can take steps to make sure that does not happen again. So, I want this young man to look back and know he accomplished something and have a good memory, and I want to feel the same way about it as one of his neighbors. And so, thank you very much for those who have co-sponsored and those who haven't. And I hope, Mr. President, I would like to suspend the rules, if I may, to allow for immediate adoption. I move to do.
Thank you, ma'am, Councilwoman. Before that, I want to repeat for the record, the extra, the extra co-sponsors.
Oh, sure.
Councilman Henry, Councilman Reigner, Councilman Cohen, all those co-sponsors. Did I miss anyone else?
Dorsey.
Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor.
I'm sorry. Sneed, did you say Sneed? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I got you. Yes, ma'am, Councilman.
And Burnett.
And Councilman Burnett. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Without objection, the rules will be suspended.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you all for your support here. I hope that you'll back.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, one second. You made the motion already. I asked, I said, without objection, the rules will be suspended. So, give me one second. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote.
Well, Councilman.
While I appreciate the intent of Councilwoman Clark's resolution, I don't believe it's the purview of the council to dictate the dress code of a restaurant or any particular restaurant, especially in this matter. Just a casual search of local restaurants will reveal a number of establishments with dress codes, although maybe not as intentionally biased as the one implemented by the Atlas Group. Is it our intent to evaluate the dress codes of all of these establishments as well? I was not put in the situation that the mother and her son had to endure, but as a black man, I'd rather they keep their dress code and the public, meaning black, white, Latino, Asian, et cetera, show them exactly what we think of it, but not patronizing any of their businesses. If relaxing the dress code means now it's okay for black people or any people, no matter how they are dressed to eat there, you can keep it. I'd rather we take our dollars to a number of restaurants that are more welcoming. But Atlas is really not the problem, they are the symptom. The problem is Baltimore refuses to talk about the fact that there is a different standard, a different level of treatment, a different level of consideration, a different value placed on black life, black business, black ideas, black communities, black investment in this town. Just look at the capital budget and see the millions of dollars invested into Broadway Square to support businesses. Are we to believe that that money didn't support an Atlas Group restaurant shop tank? Or the lease with the market corps? Tell me one black business or developer that would have gotten that deal? Or the millions of dollars that went into improving not Pennsylvania Avenue Market or Northeast Market, both in black communities, but Broadway, Cross Street, and Highlands Market? But what about the fact that every year we fund through general and capital fund dollars, cultural institutions that still have no minority caterers or vendors on their preferred list? But what about the tens of millions of dollars that have gone to businesses during the state of emergency with very little going to black-owned businesses? We've gotten to a place where we give businesses that just started in 2020 more consideration than established black businesses. There's a different standard applied to blackness in Baltimore, and if we are really going to be a truly inclusive city, it goes a lot deeper than a Greek restaurant's dress code. It also goes to the financial decisions that we control and make every week that negatively impact black people, black businesses, and black communities. I vote no.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reigner.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes, well, let me explain my, yes, and if we keep what I'm saying is because we look at only, the DPW put out $3 billion, and how many blacks get contracts? Less than 2%. Let's start talking about that, too. You talk about ethnicity, let's not use the word unless it's right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is approved. The resolution is being adopted.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
City Council Resolution 20-0237-R, Let's Lead by Example. For the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development and relevant code enforcement staff, the head of the Bureau of Solid Waste in the Department of Public Works, the Executive Director of the Environmental Control Board, and representatives from Be More Beautiful to discuss code enforcement, how we can lead by example by properly maintaining city properties and the potential opportunities for community engagement and partnership. Sponsors, Schleifer, Bullock, Clark, Sneed, McCray.
Councilman Henry.
We had the Council President as a co-sponsor.
Councilman Cohen.
Councilman Pinkett.
Everybody, wait one second. Councilman Henry, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Cohen as co-sponsors, the Council President as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this resolution, the title is Let's Lead by Example. So, there's a couple of aspects to it. The first being to bring forward the folks that are in charge of dealing with city housing properties that are owned by the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore. Far too often, we see how code enforcement works across the city, and yet, we're asking people to do things that we're not doing ourselves. And so, it's a stress thing to get any calls and then look up the property to see who owns it and to find out that essentially the Mayor and City Council own it. And we need to lead by example and maintain city-owned properties first and foremost so that we can send the right message to all property owners across the city that they should follow our lead. And the second thing is, you know, we
Uh, and the second thing is, you know, we, we just finished up the budget, uh, process for fiscal year '21, and we went through a lot of different agencies and the return on investment that's provided by the agencies and the, the work that's being done, and there's a lot of great things happening. Uh, but a few different agencies have things that stick out where we're spending a, a ton of money and not getting the results that, that we're paying for. And so, one of those, one of those avenues that, um, we, we've seen is, is in code enforcement. Code enforcement, uh, service, I think it's 745, we spent, uh, fourteen and a half million dollars, um, past couple of years, each year on it, and yet we have not seen the conditions changing, yet we're, there's, we're not being proactive, we're simply being reactive. And so, all that money, and yet behavior's not changing, we're not seeing, uh, cases, um, being followed through, and, you know, the same places that are, uh, legal dumping problems four years ago are still legal dumping problems today. And so, I want to bring them into, uh, to the committee to discuss, uh, what we can do and how we can be proactive moving forward and how we can lead by example. Thank you, Mr. President.
You, uh, please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor to this legis, this resolution. Uh, this has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 20 dash 0238R, "An Equitable Approach to Tax Sales During the COVID-19 Crisis." For the purpose of calling on the mayor to adopt the recommendations of the Baltimore City Tax Sale Workgroup in order to pursue an equitable response to the COVID-19 crisis. Sponsors: Bullock, Clark, Middleton, Sneed.
Councilman Henry.
Councilman Cohen.
Councilman Reisinger.
Add Councilman Cohen, Councilman Reisinger, Councilman Henry as co-sponsors, then someone else, uh, who will be the other co-sponsors to this legislation. Please add the Council President, co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, for your support. Um, this resolution, uh, is in support of the Baltimore Tax bill Workgroup's efforts to make reforms to the tax bill process, uh, especially with the backdrop of the COVID-19 pandemic, which, as we all know, has impacted, uh, families, uh, all across the city of Baltimore, um, very deeply. Uh, and, and we know that folks generally struggle this time of year under so-called normal circumstances to pay their, their taxes, uh, pay water bills, uh, and to generally survive. And, uh, and we are, I'm asking, uh, support to send a message, uh, to the administration to delay tax sale, uh, and, and extend it out so that people have more time, uh, to move, uh, and, and be able to stay in their homes. Um, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I also wanted to give, uh, Councilmember Clark an opportunity, well, to weigh in, this is something that we worked on together. If you want to.
You've done such a splendid job, and I think we have the votes right on, Mr. Reader.
Perfect. So, Mr. President, I'd, um, uh, like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott. Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
And Dorsey.
If I could speak on this for a moment, may I, Mr. Council President?
Sure, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Um, I just want to note that I really support this, and I know the particular case that has come up in my district recently, um, uh, the city government is not the only one, and of course, the, um, the people of the city are not the only ones who have been impacted by COVID. Um, to, to say nothing of the fact that S-STAT is probably gutted in general from the governor's budget and, uh, has a hard time keeping up with their workload on the best day, um, they are severely, severely, um, delayed in their ability to respond to peo, people's, um, uh, petitions, uh, for appeal on assessments, and they are also, um, severely behind in responding to developments that, uh, are entitled to things like the Enterprise Zone Tax Credit. Um, I know of three properties in my district that were listed for tax sale because the developer had not been, um, the owner had not been, um, credited with their Enterprise Zone Tax Credit on their tax bill, and because of that, um, their tax assessment was much higher, that tax bill was much higher than it was supposed to be, and six, seven months later, S-STAT still has not responded to properly credit them. Um, and there were other problems in S-STAT taking, you know, more than a half a year to simply respond to, uh, an appeal on assessments. So, I just want to note that that's another part of, um, the challenges that are being faced right now, things that are outside of the city's control that are putting properties wrongfully into tax sale in the first place. Um, and so, I just wanted to mention that, um, because it's something that I've been working on with our state partners, um, a, and with the Finance Department lately. Thank you, Mr. Council President, I'm in support of this, yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer. Councilman Schleifer. Councilman Schleifer, we can record that one if you could one more time. We'll come back. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
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 Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Clark. Schleifer, Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Uh, the motion is approved, this resolution has been adopted. Uh, committee reports, who will now move to build on second reader. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
President, I move that we read short titles on the second and third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, short titles will be read for the duration of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Uh, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA twenty dash zero two six nine, Kari Davis, Member, Commission on Disabilities.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, committee heads. Now, the hearing on June the twentieth, June the 24th, 2020, I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye.
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 Nay. Misconfirmed.
EA twenty dash zero two seven three, Adam S. Levine, Member, Commission on Disabilities, District 14.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the nomination favorable.
All in favor of approving this nomination say aye.
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 EA twenty dash zero two seven five, Arnie H. Sampson, Member, district five.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving the nomination say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. This nomination is confirmed. Land Use Committee.
City Council 19 dash zero four seven four, Regional thirty-nine twenty-five, Goff.
Mr. President, uh, move the finding of facts.
All those in favor of approving the findings of facts say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Findings of fact approved, Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council twenty dash zero four eight seven, zoning conditional use, amended eighteen dash zero one zero.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments, Mr. President.
Aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving the bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine seven, zoning conditional use parking lot, a portion of the property known as 201 Reverse Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
All those in favor of approving the findings of facts say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The findings of fact are approved, Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay.
Nay. Mr. Council President, may I just note?
Please note Councilman Dorsey as a nay.
I just want to note that I'm not opposing the recreation center that is associated with this, just the parking lot that this bill represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Please note Councilman Dorsey as a nay. On a third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three seven nine, Charter Amendment, Ordinance of Estinence. President Scott, Cohen, McCray.
No.
Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Yellow. Clark.
Third reader, please note Councilwoman McCray as a, as a no, or would that, would any other no be noted? Thank you, uh, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four one seven, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in R8 zoning district, Variances, 1410 West Saratoga Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Bullack, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Uh, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine nine four, zoning conditional use, banquet hall, 5401 Bel Air Room. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Matt, Bullock, Reisinger, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Uh, committee announcements, uh, members of the committee. Councilwoman Clark, can you reach yourself, please? Uh, thank you. Uh, uh, committee announcements, when you hear, uh, your committee, please proceed with your committee announcement, if you have any. Uh, we're going to start at the bottom end today, Transportation Committee, Councilman
Caught me off guard there. Um, uh, yeah, the, I just want, as a reminder, the Transportation Committee is holding a hearing this Wednesday at, uh, 3:00 PM on Councilman Henry's bill regarding, um, uh, commercial vehicle parking on the city street. Thank you.
Thank you. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, Council Vice President.
Yes, we, um, the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill twenty dash oh five two nine, that's, um, the sale of vacant and abandoned property bill with housing, that will be heard on Thursday, July 16th, 2020, at 10:00 AM, uh, virtually, and I will be in council chambers. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for those who still drive, we have a towing licensing and regulation hearing tomorrow night at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Land Use Committee. Okay, Legislative Committee of Investigations, Councilman Burnett.
I have anything with the President.
All right, any, not, anything to help either Councilman?
Nothing.
Thank you. We'll leave it to the committee, Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes, the Labor Committee will hear Bill number nineteen dash zero four five two on Thursday, July 30th. Um, it's for the purpose of requiring that the Director of Finance to provide annual reports to the mayor and the city council regarding certain Baltimore city employee-owned businesses. Um, and that's again on Thursday, July 30th at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, next we are going to go to Judiciary, Councilman Costello.
No announcements for judiciary or budget appropriations, Mr. President.
Sheriff of the Affairs Committee, Councilman Bullock.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I move to suspend rules to announce hearings for resolutions that were introduced this evening.
Without objection, uh, we will suspend the rules to announce a hearing.
All right, so, again, um, Housing and Fairness Committee will be hearing, uh, Bill two zero zero two seven three R on, uh, Tuesday, July 28th at 2:30 PM. That's Resolution "Let's Lead by Example," and that will be, uh, a virtual hearing, and that will be in council chambers. Uh, we will also, on August 11th, there will be, uh, three, uh, hearings in succession. Um, the first one, again, on Thursday, August 11th, 3:30 PM, will be, uh, Bill two zero zero two three three R, Resolution Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD7 License to a Class A7 Liquor License for a 1300 to 1302 Lauren Street, which will then be followed at 3:35 PM, uh, for, uh, uh, City Council Bill zero, uh, two zero zero two three four R, uh, Resolution Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD7 License to a Class A7 Liquor License for 1741 West North Avenue, and lastly, followed at 3:40 PM for two zero zero two three five R, Resolution for the Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD7 License to a Class A7 Liquor License at 1041 Green Mount Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Executive Appointments Committee, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, July the eighth, at 10:00 AM to review the following nominations, Mayor's Commission on Disability, Kimberly Gray, and the Board of Directors for the Parking Authority of Baltimore City, Natasha Duck, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Equity and Structure Committee, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity and Structure Committee will meet virtually on Thursday, July 9th at 11:00 AM to, uh, for a work session on City Council nineteen dash zero three eight two, Charter Amendment, City Administrator. The Equity and Structure Committee will also meet on Thursday, July 9th, uh, all of these are on WebEx, uh, at 11:01 AM for a work session on City Council twenty dash zero four eight nine, Charter Amendment, Board of Investments composition. And then, at 11:02 AM, also on Thursday, July 9th, the Equity and Structure Committee will meet for a hearing on City Council twenty dash zero five four five, Charter Amendment, Term Limits. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Education and Youth, Councilman Cohen.
No, sir.